Yes, it is. And he's done this a lot. He's done this for us a lot.
Good afternoon and welcome to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners. We're delighted to have everyone in the Commissioners' Meeting Room today and those watching on Channel 13. We are going to begin our meeting with an invocation by Pastor Mark Key from Mount Tabor United Methodist Church in Winston-Salem, and the Plenar of Allegiance today will be led by Commissioner Richard Linville. Please stand if you can.
And thank you. And tell me, when do I start? Am I ready?
You're on right now. Yeah, go right ahead.
All right. Well, let's bow our heads and pray. Father God, thank you for the gift of this day and the gift of this time. Thank you for the fact that you are the God of all people, and we give thanks and ask your blessings upon our world, our nation, our state, and our Forsyth County. Thank you for this body of Board of Commissioners. We pray your blessings upon them and their work. Guide them with wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and discernment. Again, God, we thank you for your love for each one of us, and we pray that you would always guide us so that we would make decisions that are in keeping with your plans and your purposes and your principles. Come, Lord Jesus, come, and we pray this in the mighty name of God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting today that this is the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners insofar as the $503 million we have to spend on the budget. And today is a public hearing. We're going to hear from a lot of folks, both by telephone and in person, and we're delighted that all of you that came in today to be with us are here. We look forward to hearing what you consider to be the problems, needs, and interests related to Forsyth County, and the same holds true for those who are dialing in. The agenda today consists solely of the public hearing with live comments from the telephone, and I'd like to read this number twice so you'll have some idea where you're calling with the number. But the number is 336. I think I've got this correct on here. No, I don't. What is... If you've got the number over there, Ashley?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The public session phone number is 336-422.
1200.
That's correct.
Okay. Read that one more time, please. That's good. Ashley Sloop is the clerk to the County Commissioners, and as you can see, she knows more about what's going on than I do in many instances, and that's just wonderful. But this is an opportunity, again, to make yourself know, but when you call on the telephone, I'd like to make sure that you understand that you'll be put on hold until we get there. And Mrs. Sloop will be handling the way we do this, and the method we've adopted for today's meeting is those who are in the room will be speaking, and then as soon as you finish, we'll have a telephone call, then we'll bring another one on. So it'll be alternating between telephone calls and live comments. The hearing today is not a debate. It's an opportunity to hear what you have to say, and your rights are very important, and we do want to hear from each one of you who are in attendance. And there are two options available, as I said, and I have turned the page, Mrs. Sloop, and here it is. 336-422-1200. I know you'll write that down, and you can use it. And let's kind of begin here by asking Ashley Sloop, do we have any cards ready to speak or any phone calls yet?
Mr. Chairman, we have 11 speaker cards and 14 callers on the line.
Good. So in the room, we have 11 speakers. You're limited to three minutes per, which means you're going to have a total of 33 minutes, and I certainly understand that sometimes you go 30 seconds over, sometimes you go 30 seconds under. I've got a little stopwatch here, and we'll do the best I can to make sure that you get exactly the time that you want. Okay, Mrs. Sloop, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first in-person speaker will be Chase Law.
Chase Law from Charlotte Arts Council. Good to have you with us.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I'm Chase Law. I'm the president and CEO of the Arts Council of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. Thank you so much for your time today, and thank you to Forsyth County and the Board of Commissioners for its longstanding support of the Arts Council. As we look ahead to the summer, we are about to launch our annual Summer Parks Concert Series, of which you are a sponsor. Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank the county for its support and partnership during the earlier part of this year as we hosted local musicians at the county's vaccination clinic and the fairgrounds. And thank you, Commissioner Martin, for introducing us to the Public Health Director and the Public Health Department. It's a wonderful way to get our artists working again, provide extra joy for folks receiving their vaccination, and create some great awareness around the arts and cultural sector. Lastly, we're so grateful for your consideration for continued support and recommendation to be included in the county's FY '22 budget. As you're finalizing your budget priorities, please know that your support is needed now more than ever. By including sustained and potentially increased funding in your annual budget, you're helping the Arts Council in its efforts around relief, recovery, and reopening. Over the last year and a half, the arts have been greatly impacted. Arts organizations have worked hard to sustain themselves, keep audiences engaged, and be ready to reopen when the time was right. Recently, a collection of 20 arts organizations that have historically gotten operational support from the Arts Council reported over $7.3 million lost in both earned and contributed revenue, and that's just a mere sampling of the arts, cultural, and creative community. These figures in losses do not include smaller arts organizations or local artists. Including these groups would show at least a $10 to $15 million loss in earned and contributed revenue. The arts and cultural sector is beginning to reemerge, which is a wonderful thing. However, it's going to take time and additional resources as they rebuild the programs that we currently have throughout our community and help artists get back to work and support their small businesses. We're dedicated to doing this. We're also dedicated to a deeper investment around diversity, equity, and inclusion, and initiatives around that. We'll be intentional on how we craft meaningful programming, engage with all areas of our community, and grow together with long-lasting partnerships and commitment. We are dedicated to expanding community initiatives and programs and Forsyth County resources like parks, the airport, and county facilities throughout our area. We'll work to identify opportunities, make connections, and respond to needs through the lens of the arts, particularly in marginalized communities. We are fighting, fighting hard for our arts, culture, and creative sector, and we will work to continue raising funds, and we're really excited to continue working with Forsyth County and county leaders to help accomplish all of this. Thank you so much for your time and for your generous continued support and your trust in the Arts Council.
Mrs. Law, you still have 20 seconds.
Thank you for letting me be here.
That was well done. Thank you very much.
If I could, Ms. Chase, Ms. Law, I want to thank you for being at the Juneteenth Celebration.
Yes, I enjoyed it.
To be a participant in that at the historical church in Old Salem. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. It was wonderful.
Coming from Fleming, Alamein, you ought to be really pumped up now.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I'd like to mention, too, Commissioners get all kinds of phone calls, as you're well aware, and we expect them and we hope we get them. We've had some before this hearing today who've indicated that you've cut our budget or you're not giving us any money, and that's... Just to clear things up, we do get recommendations from the county manager, but I've got to tell you, we won't make the final decision for at least a week now, so it's still up in the air, and we're working on it, and this is part of the process. Mrs. Sloop?
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Christina Montalco, 1225 East Fifth Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Christina Montalco. I'm a board member of Eliza Helping Hand and standing in for Kenya Thornton. Our agency works in the community, providing and advocating for services such as mental health, domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking. Our agency is requesting $15,000 for the proposed 2021-2022 budget for our district court mediation program. We have attempted the last three years in getting some much-needed assistance from the county for its much-needed continued service. With the changes that are so much needed in our criminal justice process, offering mediation is one of the ways we can make sure we offer the community a way in which they can resolve their issues without it changing one person's criminal record and leaving the victim in a place of frustration. With COVID being in a place where it has made the court's district calendar a challenge, we want to continue to be a productive part of the solution. We would like to thank the Commissioners for the time and allowing us to speak.
Well, she had about two minutes left, but I think that's probably the end of the conversation.
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker will be in person, Albert Noda. Please come forward.
Welcome. Both those... All three people named Albert?
Yeah. Those are my sons and daughters. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is Albert Noda, and I'm the United States of America Pickleball Association Ambassador for this area. This is Laura Desink, and this is Gary Hellman. They're key members of our team for pickleball. First of all, I'd like to do is address the creation of dedicated pickleball courts within Forsyth County. Okay, and how do we do that? First, we have to find out, is there really a demand for this? So what I have, and you have handouts, I guess, I don't know if you have them right now, but this is a map of North Carolina, and the red dots are where they already have dedicated pickleball courts. And right in the middle there is Forsyth County, and there's no red dots in there.
Uh-oh.
So that's the first thing. Second thing is, I've been to three national tournaments and participated in them, and there's been 2,000 to 3,000 players in each one of those tournaments. In fact, CBS Sports televised live the professional finals in Naples, Florida recently. Also, locally here at Johnny Mosher Memorial Park, we set up and take down whenever we need to play there four courts, and we have 130 players that are in our organizational database that we communicate with. So there's a huge amount just in that site alone. In addition, the public schools are going to integrate pickleball as a regular curriculum sports activity starting this fall, at the high school level, middle school, and elementary school. Okay, so how is this all accomplished? Well, the first thing is, you take two tennis courts, and you could put six pickleball courts on it. Here is three tennis courts, and you could put 10 pickleball courts on it. Okay? Now, how is this all done? This is Statesville before. This is Statesville after, six pickleball courts. What it cost was $27,000 to convert it from the tennis courts to the six pickleball courts. What I'd like to do is address, though, Tanglewood Park. Tanglewood Park has 10 tennis courts, four hard courts, and two sets of three clay courts. If you take the three clay courts, you can make 12 pickleball courts. Okay, now, why is that important? If you create that setup there at Tanglewood Park, tons of players will come because it's a destination resort. And how do I know that they're going to be coming? Because we ran a tournament called the North Carolina Open Pickleball Championships here at Wake Forest University in 2019. In our first year, we had 250 players, and of those 250 players, most of those came from outside this area. So they're bringing revenue in because they're staying at hotels, eating. We had professional players come from California up and down the East Coast.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. Okay, so just to give you some numbers, if, once we get to the point where we can host and do 1,000 players, we're going to be bringing in a quarter million to half a million dollars worth of revenue into the economy. So, and what I'd like to do is also set up an advisory board, if we could, for pickleball to help you implement this.
It's interesting you came in, because Don Martin knows an awful lot about that, and I hadn't even heard about it until about, no, I guess, a month ago.
Most people haven't.
You did a great job. I'm glad that you brought the two assistants along with you as well.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Good to have you with us.
Thank you.
Ashley Sloop.
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered.
Thank you.
Please turn the volume on your computer down.
It's for comments.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Val Young, 610 Barbara Jane Avenue, Winston-Salem.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Mr. Plaza and our County Commissioners. My name is Val Young, and I'm the president of the Forsyth County Association of Educators. This year has been very challenging for us all, and we will probably not feel the effects of this pandemic for years to come. To this end, it is our hope that the county Commissioners will fund the proposed budget from the school system. This budget impacts not only the school environment for our students, but our classified staff's raises. Our classified staff is the backbone of our education team. Their raises cannot be sustained by fund balances or even the extra funds relief funds. Approval of the proposed budget by the school district is a positive movement towards funding our schools for not only our staff, but the most important people, our students. It is our hope that you will advance what we do with this for all students and approve the proposed balance for our school district. Thank you.
Val, you have two minutes left. Silence. Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker will be Louise Wilton. Please come forward.
Thank you for coming in, ladies and gentlemen. Ms. Wilson, it's good to have you with us.
Thank you, and thank you for having me. I'm Louise Wilton. I'm the president of the local affiliate of NAMI, the National Alliance on Mental Illness. We are requesting a $9,000 grant to support our offering of programming locally. With the grant that we received from you last year, we committed to offering one class of family-to-family. We leveraged that into two classes, which taught family members about mental illnesses and how to better support their ill family members. We expanded our support group, family support groups, from one meeting to three meetings each month, and we also offered, for the first time, NAMI Peer-to-Peer, which is an educational course for people who have a mental illness taught by other people who have a mental illness. So we were able to make good use of your money that you granted us last year, and we hope we will get funding again this year so we can continue to do that. As you know, the virus has increased the need for mental health support drastically. Thank you.
And the total you want is $9,000?
I'm sorry, what?
The total you want is $9,000?
Yes.
Okay.
60% of that will come to us here to pay for those courses. 40% of it will go to our state office in Raleigh for administrative. They drug us kicking and screaming into Zoom, taught us how to do it, and that's why we were able to expand our offerings.
You've done a wonderful job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Ashley Sloop.
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Martha Logeman, L-O-G-E-M-A, India, 1514 Cloverdale Avenue, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27104.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Thank you so much to each of you Commissioners for the chance to add my support for the Forsyth Tech request for assistance in providing additional sworn police officers on their own off-site campuses. I'm a past chair of the Forsyth Tech Foundation Board, and as each of you is aware, the college has done an amazing job of adjusting to the pandemic and keeping its students and employees safe. The main campus has an excellent force of officers. It's the seven remaining remote campuses that typically have not had this level of policing. Instead, of course, we're using unarmed security, contract security personnel. Currently, Forsyth Tech Community College, your community college, serves 21,000 students just this last year at eight locations, seven of which are remote off-site campuses. We also have 1,000 employees in each of, across all the locations. So you can see that additional policing capacity will add the needed protection for the large number of your constituents who are served by this fine institution. Thank you so much for considering this most important request, and thank you in advance for your support of this aspect and your continuing support of the work our community college does. Thank you.
Thank you very much for calling. You had a minute and a half left for those who are hoping that they could get into the line that we're participating with on this particular public hearing, and we're trying to figure out how to spend $503 million. to figure out how to spend $503 million of the taxpayers' money. We got a pretty good idea of how to spend it, but that's the purpose in having a public hearing, so we can hear how you want us to do that, and we can make a better decision on spending it. The number, if you're, if you're not in the room and you're going to call in from outside, the number is 336-422-1200, 422-1200. Mrs. Sloop?
Mr. Chairman, our next speakers will be Andy Kelly and Ed Hosmer. Please come forward and state your address.
I'm Andy Kelly. I live at 308 Springwater Court, Winston-Salem.
Ed Hosmer, 100 Creekstone Court, Winston-Salem.
Thank you. You may begin.
I'm a member of the Sons of American Revolution, and Ed is the president of our local chapter. We're here to support the Conservation Fund $100,000 request on your special appropriations, page 175 in your budget book. This is a historic site here in Forsyth County. It has a DAR marker on it that was placed there in 1913 by Lucy Patterson, of whom Patterson Avenue is named after, and she was quite a woman for her time. Before she could vote, she was very active in the community. But some of you will remember that I appeared before some of y'all in a one-on-one session. It was December of 2019, so it was two and a half years ago, or 18. And at that time, we were trying to protect the property from being taken over by developers and building houses. Well, we were successful in getting it made a historic site. Dudley was very helpful. He put us in contact with Scott Weirman at the Winston-Salem Foundation. It was complicated, lots of attorneys, lots of meetings. But once we got it in line to become a historic site, I'd never done anything like this before, so I contacted every conservation foundation I could find in the phone book or on the internet. And eventually, the Conservation Fund stepped up. And late last year, they bought the property for $2.8 million with a bridge loan. You may have seen it, it was in the paper. And since then, they've raised over $1 million from private and public found monies. And so we feel that since this property is in Forsyth County, that it would be a great investment for the county to put forth $200,000, or $100,000 towards the final purchase of the property. And Ed's going to talk about, a little bit about, the historic nature of the property.
Good afternoon. Again, my name's Ed Hosmer. I'm the president of the Bethabre Chapter, which is the Forsyth County chapter of the Sons of American Revolution. Our purpose is, well, we're all blood lineage descendants of patriots that stood in the time of the revolution, whatever, whatever capacity they did. Anyway, our group is, the mission of it is to preserve the history and actually go out and educate and keep the revolution stories alive. My chapter does that. Our interest is at the Battle of Shallow Ford. There was a, in 1780, American patriots surprised militia loyal to the, to the King of England as they're crossing the shallow, the shallow ford, and several hundred militia men clashed, 16 died. We won the battle against the loyalists, and my chap-
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. My chapter actually does a commemoration every year in October, and it's well-received. And along with that, at that same site, General Cornwallis and the British 3,000 regulars camped there at that site of the property during the American Revolution, 1781, in their race to the Dan River, which many of you may be familiar with. There's a bonus, it's a Civil War location as well. If you're a Civil War historian, there was a Stoneman's Raid was there in 1865. Another historical piece of that property that we think is valuable is that it's the site of the Great Wagon Road. And finally, there's 49 members in my chapter, and those 49 members collectively have donated $6,000 of their own money, because we believe that much in the project and wanted to see it actually. It's going to come to fruition, and hence, we're here asking you to invest $100,000 with us. The other local Forsyth County organizations that are fundraising also are the Local Daughters of the American Revolution and a few national, or local historical associations. And finally, the National Sons of American Revolution Assembly, we're trying to get it here and likely will be successful in 2026 for the 250th anniversary, and we'd showcase the property at that point at a national level here in the county. And then for those reasons, I urge you to recommend, on page 175, under the Conservation Fund, the recommendation for the $100,000.
You gentlemen made an excellent presentation. I never, had no idea Shallowford got its name the way it did, so that's very educational.
Now, the Shallowford Road was-
Yes. You got it, and hats off to Dudley Watts. Dudley, you helped those fellows. Good to have, it's good to have a good county manager. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley Sloop.
You are now available. Thank you.
Please turn your volume down. Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
This is Bill Green, 473 Carolina Circle, Winston-Salem, 27104.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Thank you so much, and good afternoon, commissioners. I appreciate the chance to echo the comments of my friend Martha Logeman in support of Forsyth Tech's budget request concerning salaries for additional campus police officers. I'll try to avoid any duplication of the comments that Martha made. I currently serve as the vice president for community engagement at Forsyth Tech, and in that role, I'd like to offer my sincere thanks on behalf of the entire Forsyth Tech community for the continued support of commissioners for the work we do here at the college. We believe that Forsyth Tech is playing a critical role in building a stronger community, and none of that could happen without you and your, your loyal support. Throughout the pandemic, our highest priority has been the safety and health of our students and our employees. During normal times, but more than ever during COVID, it's been our excellent main campus police force that's been instrumental in delivering on the promise of a safe and secure place to learn and work. As Martha alluded to, though, our other seven Forsyth County campuses are serviced by contract, unarmed contract security people who have a very limited ability to protect the tens of thousands of people that are on those campuses every year, and a very limited ability to protect the millions in investments in facilities that you have made on those campuses as well. Obviously, anything that goes beyond a very simple problem on those seven other campuses necessitates a call to local law enforcement. COVID seems to have brought an increase in crimes against property and people, unfortunately. And as we continue to grow at Forsyth Tech and continue to educate large numbers of citizens, we believe it's critical for us to employ more sworn officers and other security personnel who can visibly deter crime or respond quickly and effectively when something happens on any one of our campus locations.
One minute, one minute.
So again, sincere thanks to each of you for your service and for your support for Forsyth Tech. We hope to look favorably on our request for this critical investment in the safety of our entire college community. And that concludes, Val, Martha, and I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir, for calling. If you're watching this via television, you're watching the public hearing of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners in an effort to determine the problems, needs, and interests related to Forsyth County and how we can improve them. Mrs. Sloop?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our next speaker will be Alan Younger. Please come forward.
Good afternoon, everyone. So glad to be with you in person. My name is Alan Younger, and I live at 5500 Stone Crossing Drive, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27104. Thank you for your leadership here in Forsyth County. I'm glad that I've watched you at work, because I've attended this meeting. I'm going for the Guinness Book of World Records, more than any other non-elected official or staff person. Do y'all think I got it? Okay, cool. So with that said, I serve as the director of the Small Business Center at Forsyth Tech Community College, and while serving in this role, we've learned that collaboration with other organizations that are committed to entrepreneurship is essential in our ability to best serve those small business owners and those seeking to become small business owners. So one of the organizations with which we collaborate is Hustle Winston-Salem, and we've collaborated with them for years, ever since they started in, in 2017. And for the last few years, I've served on the Board of Directors. Since its inception, Hustle Winston-Salem was and continues to be a force of positive turbulence as we challenge and shape systems, share stories as a way to expose barriers, and work toward bridging the gap of entrepreneurial inequality, and provide resources to women, people of color, and those in marginalized business districts. Our mission is to help grow the local economy by accelerating underrepresented entrepreneurs with a focus on women and people of color, as I just mentioned, as well as marginalized business districts. We believe that anyone with a great idea can succeed in a community with equitable access to resources, education, and support. We leverage creative strategies and community partnerships to deliver high-impact programs and support services. Our vision is a thriving city where all citizens have equitable opportunity to achieve economic prosperity through entrepreneurship. In all our work, we are equally as committed to scaling people and community trust as we are to business and bottom lines. Everything we do is aligned with our core values of inclusion, equity, diversity, innovation, growth, community, and trust. Thank you for your consideration of our request to continue this great work.
Thank you, Alan Younger. Good presentation. Ashley Sloop?
You are now available.
Please turn your volume down. Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Laura Lee, 411 West Fourth Street, Suite 211, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Thank you. Chairman Prior and Forsyth County Commission, this is Laura Lee, senior vice president of Economic Development at Greater Winston-Salem, Inc. We are grateful for your support of our organization to lead economic development for our county. We appreciate your continued funding of our efforts and your consideration during this upcoming budget cycle. We believe your support of our most recent announcement, along with other projects in the pipeline, will fuel the continued economic success of Forsyth County. Thank you again for your support, and we look forward to continuing our work to attract new industries and grow existing employers.
Very good. Still have a minute and a half left. We remind you, if you're watching on television, you'd like to make a comment regarding the problems, needs, and interests of our community, the number is 336-422-1200. Mrs. Sloop?
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker is English Bradshaw. Please come forward and state your address.
Mr. Bradshaw, as you come forward, Commissioner Capon told me you look like you have a Hawaiian shirt on today.
Well, I've spent 44 years in Hawaii, at home. I go back there once a year, so.
Yeah, looks good.
Well, I want to thank everyone here for giving us the opportunity to do what we're doing, because if it weren't for you, we wouldn't be able to do a thing. And so I want to share with you what we have been doing in the, in the last, well, our time, I want to start a year and a half ago, because, but we have been talking about what we want to be doing for the last 10 years, but once we got started, we got clarified as to where we want to go with this project, we took off. And so, first of all, I am English Bradshaw. I'm the chairman of the board of the Memorial Industrial, Memorial Industrial Community Development Corporation located. We do work at our, our projects, and also our emphasis is doing, putting together projects or repurposing the existence and also the, the legacy of what the Memorial Industrial School of Orphans used to be. And we think we're on the right, right road, and you folks have been very, very, very helpful in helping us to maintain that focus. What we are here today asking for is to explain what it is that we are doing now. We, in the last year and a half, we have been able to do quite a bit. You were able to provide us with the opportunity to develop what we want to do is the incubator farm and food program at the Horizons site. We want to rival what's going on out there at the operating, in our Tanglewood, but it's going to be a different things. We'll, we'll show you that you're going to have two good projects that in fact are represent what their private and a, a community, I mean, what public-private partnership could do. We're asking for $20,000. That's only, you know, I wish I had a checkbook, I could probably send you some, make a rubber check for you, but that's okay. But what we're asking for is that, we are asking for this exec, this $20,000 to hire a part-time executive director that can help us to do what, supplement what we're trying to do with the farm, the incubator farm project, also the community farm project.
You have 30 seconds.
We were able to hire a very, very excellent coordinator, Mr. Mary Jack Brennan, who is in fact spearheading the incubator farm program, is doing an excellent job. But we also have another focus under our food program. We also have community involvement and an educational component to that as well. What we want to do is incubator farm will, will teach young and also new farmers how to become farmers. And also, the community farm program will also teach new veteran farmers how to operate and develop their own farm and be able to be successful in, and land on a shepherd. And so what we asking is that we could get the disposition to give Mary Jack all the time to develop the farm project, and also give us the time to give me some, some, some help, because I have, you know, it's a long road to go. But I can, we're just needing some administrative help, part-time. We've been actually, we've been receiving quite a bit of support from funders. We've been funded generously with, from Winston-Salem Foundation. We also receive funding for, from Z. Smith Reynolds Foundation. We're also in the process of waiting for another, for, for a decision from the K. B. Reynolds Foundation.
You just ran out of time. But that's okay. But that's okay, you can finish.
Oh, I'm going to borrow two of your minutes that you'll be giving back to you. But we, yes, but we will asking that you just, in your deliberations, give us the opportunity to get the best executive director to keep us going because you put us on a good path and I want to continue that way. Thank you.
Amen, brother. Thank you. Mrs. Ashley Sloop, Clerk to the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners.
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Richard Watts, 5735 Pop Town, North Carolina.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Yes, again, my name is Richard Watts. I am a retired principal from Forsyth County Schools after 32 years. I joined Crosby Scholars, and I'm speaking today on behalf of the Crosby Scholars Program. I just want you to know that the program that I'm currently working with is called AMP, African-American Males Pursuing Education Dreams. In our program, we seek to touch lives of young African-American men and their families to support them in Crosby Scholars as well as support them on their journey beyond Crosby Scholars. This summer, we are sponsoring five camps for the young men in Crosby Scholars. Two will be held at Forsyth Tech Community College. One will be held here with Understanding Car Maintenance at 101. And another academy will be held here at Goodwill Building, Understanding Who You Are, Trying to Have a Deeper Depth into the Look at Being a Young Black Talented Black Male. And the last workshop will be a youth workshop for rising freshmen here at the Goodwill Building. During the workshop, we will touch on affirmations, leadership skills, college access, college tours, high school mathematics, high school science. We also finished a workshop this year titled Seeds of Wealth, which is financial literacy. There were 10 sessions, several before COVID, and several doing COVID on financial literacy and understanding the basics of finances. We ended the celebration with a stock market presentation, and the students were allowed to, and the parents were allowed to invest in a little bit of a stock market sharing program. So I would like the Board to consider strongly supporting Crosby Scholars as an organization in the community that seeks to make an impact and seeks to make a difference with young people and the lives of parents. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. You did it with 45 seconds remaining. Mrs. Sloop.
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker will be Elizabeth Dampier. Please come forward.
A familiar face.
Good afternoon, Chairman Plowler, fellow commissioners. My name is Elizabeth Dampier, and I'm the Executive Director at Collidium located at 400 West Haynes Mill Road in Winston-Salem. Much like you are probably hearing from many nonprofits who provide arts and innovation education in our community and to the state and beyond, COVID hit us hard. Large disruptions we have never experienced before have challenged us to think harder and think smarter. But through it all, we have used the skills of persistence, resilience, and creativity, among others, the same skills we encourage practicing at Collidium every single day. Our goal continues to be to ask our community what their needs are and to serve where we fit, and your support has been critical in helping us to do that. Following are some of our highlights of the past year. Collidium Downtown closed its doors in March of 2020 and just reopened Saturday, May 29. It will be open every day this summer, and in the fall will be open on the weekends to the public. Without sustained support like yours, I'm not sure we even would have been able to reopen Collidium Downtown at all. Our staff created Collidium at Home videos with activities, experiments, crafts, and knowledge-building content for families that's now available all the time on our website. Last summer, Collidium offered 11 weeks of summer camp, all safe and COVID-free, serving more than 275 children. Collidium North operated as a remote learning site from August through March. In addition, from August through December, we offered a preschool class in the mornings and after-school enrichment for families wanting to give their children opportunities to unplug after virtual learning. We welcomed visitors back with precautions in place in a limited capacity in November. In the fall, we began talking with the schools and heard that teachers needed additional resources, particularly in the sciences. We converted three of our field trip programs to virtual and offered free virtual programming to teachers from March through mid-May.
You have one minute.
We offered winter camp and spring break camp, serving more than 300 kids. This year's summer camp started this morning, and we're already at 90% capacity. In fact, while I was in this meeting, I heard that all of our second, third grade camps are 100% sold out. So parents want to unplug their kids, and they are looking for safe, fun opportunities, and they trust Collidium to be able to do that. Collidium provides opportunities to overcome learning loss and get back to a more normal life, and your investment in us makes that all possible. We thank you for your support for Collidium. We can continue to build upon the work we have paused and the work we have created with it. We continue the important things, growing our work through our Museums for All program, which focuses on making the museums and its programs available to our entire diverse community, and helping all families laugh and make memories together while preparing our kids for the future. Thank you again for your support and commitment. We appreciate you.
Congratulations. An excellent three minutes on the dot. Mrs. Sloop.
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Hernandez. I am a senior peer advisor at Crosby Scholars, and I wanted to share a little bit of my experience as an advisor for our students and also as an alumni from the program. I joined Crosby Scholars in 10th grade. I bet you went lots ago because I didn't think it would be important back then. I knew about Crosby Scholars and all the events they had for college preparation tools, but I didn't take it seriously until my 10th grade year, once I saw a recruiting event and saw how much they benefit our students. I'm really happy I joined when I did because I was getting extra assistance I might have been missing out on. And by my senior year, I was even more grateful. I'm a first-generation college student with my minority background who had no idea what to do for the college admissions process, and the parents who knew even less. I can't even imagine how lost I would have been had it not been for Crosby during my senior year. My 101 session with my advisor was the best advantage. She helped me apply to college and get accepted to my junior school at Wake Forest University. She encouraged me to apply for scholarships, to which I received a couple and made me go into college as possible. I just don't know what I would have done without them. Looking back, I would have wished that I joined Crosby a lot sooner than I did because there's so much that the middle school and high school program does for our students, not only in the high school but preparing for college, but preparing them for life beyond college, such as getting mental health sessions and time management skills. As a college student, I also never felt abandoned by Crosby. I feel the program lives up to its motto, "For college for life." I receive emails at least once a month, and by my senior year of college, which was May 2020, I got an email about the opportunity as a senior peer advisor. And this position resonated with me because I would be working with students and helping them apply to college, which is something that I forgot from Crosby, and I wanted to get back to the next generation of students. I've been able to help students whose shoes I have been in, but I've also worked with students who have completely different backgrounds. And despite these differences, there is one thing in common that they all had. They need a help with the admissions in college process, and that was something that I could give them. Working with Crosby has given me the opportunity to listen and engage with students, which is great practice for the career I'm pursuing as a mental health counselor. I feel a lot of support from this organization as an alumni and also as a current advisor in the program, and I'm very thankful to be a part of it. I wanted to give thanks for listening to me and making, as a sponsor, making this possible for helping our students to have a chance to attend college.
Thank you, Jennifer. Will you please state your address?
My address?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that what I all thought? I'm a little confused.
What is your address?
Like, address of where we are located?
Yes, ma'am.
It is 2701 University Parkway, Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
Thank you very much, and thank you for calling today.
All right, thank you.
Another even 30 seconds, Mrs. Sloop.
Mr. Chairman, our next caller, caller in person is Dan Bessie. Please come forward.
Oh, good. Experience in government counts.
Also, the experience of getting home and achieving.
I understand. It happens the older you get, the more difficult it is to get up. The challenge, Dan, is to get back. Dan Bessie is a member, as we all know, of the Winston-Salem City Council. He's finally taken his coat off, got short-sleeved shirts on for 90-degree weather, and it's good to have you with us, Dan. Looking forward to what you have to say.
Forgive me, I have never been eaten by a chair before. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Dan Bessie. My address is 978 Benjamin's Way, Winston-Salem, 27103. I'm here today to raise a public health topic in the context of the county budget, but first I would like to thanks, provide my thanks to Commissioners who have spoken up in favor of making a more-than-business-as-usual investment in our public schools this year. And I'd like to note, in the budget context, that what is enabling that more-than-business-as-usual investment is the more rapid-than-expected recovery of our local revenues and our economy from the depths of the COVID deadly pandemic. Numbers of infections, hospitalizations, and deaths have plummeted, due largely to a successful, ongoing vaccination program with a safe and effective vaccine. In that context, I'd like to commend, caution, and ask. First, I'd like to commend the strong and tireless efforts of the Forsyth County Department of Public Health staff in coordinating our community vaccination response, in cooperation with community institutions, faith and business leaders and community leaders, and hundreds of volunteers. They have made Forsyth County one of our state's leaders in community vaccinations. Thank you again to the public health professionals and all who've worked in this effort. We've moved from the wholesale stage of this vaccination effort, where we're vaccinating hundreds or even thousands, to the retail version, where the successes come in dozens or even one at a time, which leads me to the caution. The work is not over yet. We're still below where we need to get to in order to establish that strong community resistance to a renewed surge of infections. And as global variants of the virus dominate transmissions and are even more easy to transmit and deadlier, we face the prospect, if we don't reach that community resistance level, of having another wave of deadly infections come this fall or winter. I praised the tireless efforts of our public health staff, but human beings do get tired, even professional public health staff being called upon to respond to a public health crises while also doing their regular work. So here's the.
You have 30 seconds.
Thank you. Please make provision in your budget planning to provide whatever supplemental assistance our public health department needs for the second half of this year in order to keep this effort up and see it to a successful conclusion, because we haven't reached all our community yet. I would note that as of Saturday's paper, the statistics that were quoted were that an estimated 40% of our white residents, non-Hispanic white residents, have received the vaccination, but only an estimated 28% of our black residents and 25% of our Hispanic residents. We have more work to do. Please support that work, and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for an excellent presentation, as usual. Appreciate it, Dan. Mrs. Sloop.
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello. Mr. Chairman, I believe they are not online.
That's perfectly all right. We'll take the next in the audience. I used the word "audience."
You are now available.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. Please state your name and address for the record.
Marisha Woodbury, 3022 North Glen Avenue, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27105.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Shay Woodbury, Chair of the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education. To the Chair, Dave Plowler, and Vice Chair, Dr. Martin, and to all of the Forsyth County Commissioners, I am calling today to encourage the Commissioners to accept our Board's proposed budget for the benefit of all students and staff for the upcoming school year. It is critical now, more than ever, that school boards and county commissioners, as we have always done here in our great community, work together to establish a budget that will help us meet the challenges of a loss of learning that has now been compounded and the mental health crisis for a generation or more of students. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you, and I hope that you have the rest of a great day. Thank you.
Shay Woodbury, very good presentation. She is also on the staff of A&amp;T University's Professorships in Greensboro. Mrs. Sloop.
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker will be Sam Matthews. Please come forward and state your address.
Sam Matthews, you look good.
Good afternoon. I'm Sam Matthews, address 1700 Ebert Street, Winston-Salem, 27103. Commissioner Plowler and members of the county commissioners, on behalf of the Shepherd Center and those that we're privileged to serve, I really want to thank you for your valuable support this past fiscal year in consideration of our proposed budget in the coming fiscal year in the aging services arena. The county's investment, and I can assure you this, is paying significant dividends. During 2020, despite COVID-19, we remained fully operational and served a record 6,365 older adults throughout the county. We experienced a 32% increase in requests for services during this year, and many of those were on fixed incomes and need for access to medical services and critical home repairs. Additionally, the Shepherd Center of Greater Winston-Salem is one of the two state-certified senior centers in Forsyth County. Both of us are centers of excellence, as determined by the Division of Aging and Adult Services in Raleigh. The other center is the Shepherd Center of Kernersville, our co-funded agency. As senior centers of excellence, our health and wellness programs and services for active older adults are highly regarded statewide, and between our centers, over 70 program activities are offered each week, mostly virtual during the last 15 months, but both of our centers are now open and beginning to have in-person activities. These accomplishments were made possible in part by the funding that we continue to receive through the county budget, and I want to thank you again for your continued confidence in our programs and services, as well as your valuable support of our mission. I will say, and I know that Chairman Plowler has this communications, that Lynn Garns, the interim Director of the Shepherd Center of Kernersville, could not be here due to a death of a family staff member, and I want to express her appreciation as well. Thank you very much.
Very kind of you, Mr. Matthews. I will tell you that he's dog's best friend. Sam has a little dog. He likes to walk around the Haynes Park all the time. It's good to have him with us. Mrs. Sloop.
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record. and address for the record.
Tom Elmore, 1931 Union Cross Road, Winston-Salem, North Carolina.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Good afternoon. This is Tom Elmore from the Addiction Recovery Care Association. Arca would like to thank the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners for your patience during COVID-19 and your ongoing support in making Arca's Greenwood Project a reality. Arca is progressing well with Phase 1 of the project as we prepare to move this fall, allowing our new community partner, Trosa, to bring their long-term program to the triad. We also would appreciate your consideration for ongoing support to complete Phase 2, scheduled to start January 2022. Phase 2 will provide for more in-depth aftercare, including intensive outpatient medication assistance treatment and community meeting and training spaces. The demand for substance use treatment services remains high as we recover from the impact of COVID-19. Your investment not only addresses the opioid epidemic, but increases access to services for all substance use disorders. We look forward to providing you with more details of how Arca plans to meet the needs of the community going forward. Again, thank you for your ongoing support.
Wonderful report. Still has a minute and a half left. Mrs. Sloop?
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker is Margaret Collins. Please come forward and state your address.
Margaret Collins, a good citizen in Forsyth County. Good to have you with us, Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Chairman Plowler and county commissioners. It's a pleasure to see you today. I'm Margaret Collins. I'm the founding executive director of the Center for Creative Economy, and this is, this year, we are celebrating our 10th anniversary. Yes, we've been here since 2011. I live at 5212 Cedarwood Creek Drive in Winston-Salem. Thank you for your support of our organization this past year and for including us in the fiscal year '22 budget. I hope that will continue. This allows our organization to host the sixth annual Velocity Creative Business Accelerator. Our programs provide inception-stage business training for those that really need it to expand the capacity of our creatives and artists to grow successful businesses and become viable entrepreneurs. We deliver a robust curriculum and provide customized mentoring to fulfill our mission to launch, grow, and accelerate creative businesses. In these early stages, this training is vital for the successful launch and growth of companies. And CCE drives economic development as well alongside the market traction that we bring to our companies. Two companies have already moved here to Forsyth County from Boston and from New Delhi, India, and we are bringing in more every year. 2011 is a pivotal year, as we celebrate our 10th anniversary, and we want to position Forsyth County as the place for creatives and artists to be known, to be able to come here, put down roots, and grow their businesses. They will network with our community of mentors and build thriving enterprises. And our impact to date is huge. We have currently launched 50 companies, and 90% are still thriving. Nine million in revenue has been earned, and 10.7 million in investment has been raised. There's been 187 jobs created, and 70% are female founders, and about 40% are minority founders, and we are working to increase these numbers and to be very diverse and intentional about our marketing efforts. So we have a real opportunity now with the pandemic and post-pandemic. In our work, we see that some creative entrepreneurs fall short of their goals, while others can thrive and react and pivot to current environment. So in our experience, the best path forward for those that are falling behind is to retool and develop new business models and to strengthen their skills and enhance their understanding of the markets they seek to serve.
30 seconds.
So with increased Forsyth County funding this year, we will expand the support and services we deliver to the creative community. We serve a diverse array of creative companies, which include design, music, educational tech, photography, gaming, culinary, and beauty companies. CCE's vision is to establish Forsyth County as the place for creative entrepreneurs to start and grow their business. Thank you with your support. We can do even more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Collins. I enjoyed the smile on Chase Law's face from the Arts Council when you mentioned you're interested in helping the arts grow in Forsyth County. Thank you so much.
We collaborate with the Arts Council very much. Thank you.
Mrs. Sloop?
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
I always think of the Jeopardy! theme song when we're waiting for people.
Is anyone on the line? Mr. Chairman, they're not answering.
Okay, well, we can go in. We've got in-house.
You are now available.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record. Is anyone on the line?
Oh, yes, yes, I'm here. Kelly Easton, 1922 South Martin Luther King Drive.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Good afternoon. I am here as an education advocate, advocate on behalf of the children in the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School District. The truth is, far too many students, particularly students of color, students from economically disadvantaged families, students with disabilities, and English learners have been denied opportunities promised to them for a sound and basic education throughout our state. Receiving a quality education is paramount to catalyze the full growth and self-actualization of students, families, and our community here in Forsyth County as a whole. Lowering funding after a pandemic is likened to a fireman lowering the water pressure while trying to put out a fire. We need every resource at our disposal to make up for the loss of learning caused by COVID-19 and to begin to take equitable steps towards closing the opportunity gap that resulted prior to COVID-19. Please direct all resources where they are needed the most. Budgets are indeed more documents that show what we value and prioritize. Today, I'm asking that our Board of Commissioners value and prioritize our students. Please make every effort to increase, expand, and actually maximize our opportunity, given this moment, to invest in our children and the educational outcomes produced within our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a very good, concise report. How are we doing on in-house speakers, Mrs. Sloop?
Mr. Chairman, we have one in-house speaker left.
All right.
That's Brenda Fullmore. Please come forward and state your address.
Good to have you with us, Ms. Fullmore.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, and to the county commissioner. My name is Brenda Fullmore, and my address is 1604 Lowry Street, Winston-Salem. Thank you for this opportunity to be here, and I'm here on behalf of Creative Corridors Coalition. I am the fifth chair of the organization, and I would like to thank you for your previous support in us having the iconic bridges that you see here today, the Twin Arches, the Green Street Bridge over by the ballpark, as well as the Strawway Bridge. We, as a nonprofit organization, we're board members of about 40, are volunteers. We love our community. We invest time in this community, and with the iconic bridges, people will say, "Well, why you investing in bridges?" We investing in bridges to bring our community together. We have a rich history here. We have prominent people that has lived here, that worked here, and we are asking for your continued support for the Peter Oliver site. Peter Oliver was a former slave that bought his freedom in 1802 and was a part of the Moravian community. And under the construction of Business 40, the Old Salem Hidden Town Project discovered that Peter Oliver Farm was adjacent to the old Business 40, which is now Salem Parkway. We would like to develop that site and make it a community culture site, not a park, but a pavilion, and we would like your continued support of $100,000 so we can get the design for that park. What that does, that helps bring our community together, as the bridges has helped to bring and unite our community with the Twin Arches, that was bringing Winston and Salem together. With the Strawway Bridge, with the bicyclers and people that works downtown or in our community, they will be able to walk and ride and be able to enjoy the bridges here in our city. So we are committed to this initiative. We know we will have to raise additional funds, but we would like your support in making this a reality. When we didn't have the bridges, we were selling air, and the community came together, and now you see these iconic bridges in our city. So we sincerely appreciate your support and ask that you would consider this in the upcoming budget, and thank you for your time.
Appreciate your being here. Peter Oliver is a, that's another lesson. I didn't know about Peter Oliver anymore than I knew about Shaliford Road, and that's been an interesting day today.
Yes, and his descendant still lives here today, and Robin Paul, Chris Paul's mom, is one of the descendants of Peter Oliver.
My golly.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, we've had 2 hours and 15 minutes of citizens from Winston-Salem and Forsyth County and surrounding communities telling us what they think the problems, needs, and interests are of our fine county. The question now is, do you have any comments before we adjourn, or anything you'd like to say that would be important?
Mr. Chairman, we have three more callers on the phone.
Commissioners, please ignore what I just said, and I'll turn the meeting over to Ashley Sloop.
You are now available. Thank you. You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record. Hello? Is anyone there? Mr. Chairman?
Can I hear you?
Yes, I can. Please state your name and address for the record.
This is Kristen Perry at 464 Shady Grove Court in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27103.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Great, thank you. I am calling on behalf of Senior Services. I've had the pleasure of serving in the role of Chief Operating Officer at the organization for the past four and a half years, and I'm very happy to be with you all, speaking in support of our request for funding this year. As you all are very likely aware, Senior Services is a nonprofit agency that provides a variety of supports and services to older adults and their caregivers throughout our community, and our goal is to ensure that seniors in Forsyth County can remain in their homes, aging with dignity and purpose, for as long as is safe and possible. For us, you know, that saying is true, there's really no place like home, and we know that home is where most everyone hopes to be able to stay as they age. So through Senior Services programs like Meals on Wheels, Senior Lunch, Home Care, our Williams Adult Day Center, Living at Home, and finally, our Help Line, Referral and Information Service, we're helping to make sure that thousands of people have the nutritional support, the safety checks, the personal care assistance, and access to information that they need to do just that, stay at home. And honestly, in a year where staying at home took on a whole new meaning for all of us, I'm thrilled to share that despite the many operational changes that COVID forced us to make for the well-being of the seniors that we're serving, and of course, our staff and volunteers as well, we were able to still find a way to provide care and to support older adults and their families. Throughout this past year, we've served nearly 2,000 seniors during COVID and enrolled 450 new people into one of our direct service programs. We also launched an in-home respite care service to help families while our Williams Center was closed, and delivered weekly frozen meals and shelf-stable meal boxes to hundreds throughout the entire county. We were able to distribute masks and comfort and care items, household helps, and activity packets to families each and every week, and invited hundreds of community members all throughout Forsyth County to what we call "Send a Senior a Smile" through a letter-writing campaign while we were all keeping our distance and thrown a bit isolated. Our staff and volunteers made wellness and safety calls to make sure people were faring all right throughout the pandemic, and in short, we found a way to continue our mission. And as we're all looking forward to brighter days ahead, and we're celebrating our own return to normal here at Senior Services with the reopening of our Williams Center and our Senior Lunch sites, and also the restart of our daily hot meal deliveries in our Meals on Wheels program, we're also celebrating the resilience of our community. We're celebrating the resilience of our staff and our volunteers, our supporters, and most importantly, the resilience of the seniors that we serve. So I just wanted to thank the county commissioners for once again considering Senior Services' request for funding in the new fiscal year and for your continued support of this work, particularly as more people are reaching age 60, 70, and even 80-plus in our community. It's a worthwhile and important investment that is changing lives, and I just, I thank you so much for your support.
Thank you for calling. This is it, Mrs. Sloop, I think. Am I right?
Mr. Chairman, we have two more callers.
Oh, two more, okay.
You are now available. Thank you.
Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bob Erie of 228 Cascade Avenue in Winston-Salem.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
I'm calling on behalf of the Winston-Salem Theater Alliance, a nonprofit, all-volunteer community theater that has been entertaining this city for 38 years. Theater never asked for or received any funds from the county in its first 36 years. That changed over the last two years ago when we decided to acquire the Bluebird Cat Company Building at 650 West Sixth Street. This building in the downtown area had been vacant for four years, and we are converting it to a permanent home for the theater. We have raised over $1.8 million towards this effort, but we are still $400,000 short of our goal. Construction is almost complete, and we expect to open a brand-new 166 theater on August 20. Two years ago, we asked the county for $100,000 towards that effort, and you were kind enough to give us $10,000. Last year, we asked for the remaining $90,000, but received nothing. In December, you awarded money to many arts organizations, but again, we received nothing. This year, we have requested the remaining $90,000 from our original asks, but have not been included in your proposed budget. We are asking that you reconsider and find a way to participate at a higher level in the most exciting new entertainment facility in many years in Winston-Salem. Thanks for your consideration.
Thank you very much for calling.
You are now available. Thank you.
And the guests do, and then I call her back.
Please turn your volume down. Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jennifer Nelson Weaver, 119 West Devonshire Street, Winston-Salem.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
This is Jay Nelson Weaver with Family Services. The county-proposed budget includes funding for family services to offer counseling to clients who have experienced trauma. If funded, these dollars will be focused on serving children who are survivors of assault, abuse, and other forms of trauma. We greatly appreciate the commissioner's consideration of dedicating these funds to serve those most vulnerable in our community. Family Services' trauma counseling is open to the community, meaning residents can self-refer. During the last three months, Family Services has had the highest number of people calling for counseling. for counseling over the 40 years that we have been offering counseling services in this community. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for calling. That's a stunning report, the highest number in three years. Do we have any more?
You are now available.
Oh, we do.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is the last one. Thank you for calling the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. This session is for comments only, and questions cannot be answered. Please state your name and address for the record.
Iris Sunshine, Executive Director of the Children's Law Center of Central North Carolina, 102 West Third Street, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27101.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each, and a 30-second warning will be given. You may begin.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Plowler, and Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak with you today. As I said, my name is Iris Sunshine, and I am the Executive Director of the Children's Law Center of Central North Carolina. On behalf of the Board of Directors and Staff, I thank you for your generous support of the Children's Law Center and for recognizing the importance of the Children's Law Center's work, mission, and commitment to the children we serve. Each day, the Children's Law Center's dedicated attorneys are advocating for children living with, coping with, the trauma from adverse childhood experiences such as household dysfunction, abuse, or neglect. The 217 boys and girls the Children's Law Center served last year are at risk for poor health, behavioral, and societal outcomes which last into adulthood. They are at risk because they witnessed their mother or stepmother being beaten because their family is dissolving due to divorce and separation, because they have been assaulted, or because these children often feel that no one in their family loves or protects them, and all of this has been compounded for 15 months by the pandemic. District Court judges appoint the Children's Law Center to the most egregious cases that come before them. As mobility of the public has improved and children return to school and summer programs, we anticipate there will be more demand for the Children's Law Center's services. The trauma our young clients suffer has been amplified by the pandemic, and they need the skilled, dedicated, unbiased, and passionate team of the Children's Law Center to be responsive and zealously advocate for their best interests. We know that based on the study conducted by the Wake Forest School of Law at Dean Emeritus Suzanne Reynolds and Professor Ralph Peoples, that the appointment of the Children's Law Center's guardian sedentum in a civil domestic violence case significantly reduces future family violence, that these families are 70% less likely to have a later recurrence of violence between the parties. Please be assured that since COVID-19 required us to work remotely, our team avoided any interruption in our services to over 230 children by utilizing technology and ingenuity. We have interviewed children and parents via Zoom.
You have 30 seconds.
When necessary, we have visited children in their homes in person and at school, taking necessary precautions. I respectfully request that you continue your support and investment in the Children's Law Center by awarding us a grant of $50,000, enabling us to continue to innovate and better serve the children who have been doubly traumatized during this pandemic, the boys and girls experiencing violence within the confines of their home without the escape and safety net of school, friends, and teachers. Each dollar from Forsyth County strengthens programs that positively impact the life of a child, help guide him or her on a trajectory towards success, and are an incredible value for the community. Thank you so much.
Good report from Iris Sunshine, and thank you, Ashley, for a good job today. The Children's Law Center is one of those organizations that makes the sun want to shine. We have a few minutes left. We've been in town now on the phone and in person for about almost two and a half hour, hour and a half. That's not bad. Any comments before we adjourn, or anything you'd like to say? Mrs. Loop will be back in here at 9 o'clock tomorrow morning?
Yes, sir.
Breakfast will be served?
Breakfast will be served.
Child care?
No childcare.
I couldn't resist that, Ted, just in case. Mr. County Manager, have any comments?
No, sir.
Okay, here comes Mr. Kappan's famous phrase. Move, we adjourn. I'll second the motion. We adjourn.